Evening Glenn. Good, you ready to roll? Are you ready to roll? What happens? All right, that's fine. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to read the roll.
Mr. Pretherich?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Ms. Snively?
I'm here. And we're all here, and so I would invite all of you who would like to, to join us in the fledgeable adjournments.
Our congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I will move to public participation. I'd like to begin with a proclamation. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Oxford Police Division, Miami University Police Department, Oxford Township Police Department, and the Butler County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Oxford, Ohio Township, and the region of Butler County. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their law enforcement officers, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocents against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, our police departments provide a public service role in an ever-increasingly vital, changing world, now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14 to May 20, 2023, as Police Week in the City of Oxford, and call upon all citizens of the City of Oxford to observe Monday, May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. Chief will receive this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the members of the Oxford Division of Police and our neighboring partners with the Sheriff's Office and the Miami Police and Oxford Township Police. So we have a really good group of folks who work up here, and so we appreciate this as we go forward in Police Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Much appreciated. Next item, I would like to introduce Ms. Nancy Mix, who is the new Butler County Auditor. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Council, and staff. I'm pleased to be here tonight. I appreciate you allowing me a few minutes. I won't take a lot of your time. I want to offer my condolences on the passing of your colleague, Joe Newlin.
Thank you.
Sounded very tragic, and I'm truly sorry for your loss. I've been where you are. I was a city council member in Middletown and Vice Mayor from 2002 through 2005, and so I am familiar with many of the issues that you deal with, and I always refer to my time on city council as boot camp for politics. I do know Oxford pretty well. My son graduated in 2019 from the Farmer School of Business. Those were very hard years for me. Not for him. Anyway, I just wanted to come and introduce myself. I've, this is the third place I'm going, but I'm trying to reach every city and township in Butler County, especially since I was just appointed in February. I'm new to the, to the role. But I was treasurer of Butler County for 16 years, so you're familiar with my tax bills. No longer my tax bills. Anyway, so I've stepped into the triennial update, so I don't know if you pay attention to the Journal News, but we are currently undergoing the update to values that happens every three years. Three years ago was a revale of the whole county, you know, property by property, but a triennial update, which is what we are in now, is where the state performs sales ratios, and they tell you that after three years, the market is doing this. And so we received our letter a few weeks ago saying 42% increase in values countywide, and I know where the hotspots are, but I don't think Oxford is as bad of a hotspot just to...
Well, not Westchester.
Right. And, well, and then there are other communities that have been locked in lower that are going to be up to where they should be now. And anyway, the former auditor, as you may have read, took the fight to the Tax Commissioner for the last three years. He lost in the Board of Tax Appeals his case that he was making, and so after three years of contesting in February, the treasurer, that was me, I had to mail out tax bills with retroactive tax increases on them to 40% of the county. Now, Oxford was not one of those places, but it was Hamilton, Fairfield, Fairfield Township, and Westchester, and those were chosen simply because that's where they could get the most parcels. So they kind of bore the brunt of that loss in the, at the Board of Tax Appeals. And so the outrage in 2020 with the former auditor was a 20% increase, and he was wanting it to be around 14%. They said 20. Anyway, they went back and forth. He had to retroactively bill, or I did, but now we're looking at 42%, and so the outrage is even bigger. I'm not sure what's going to happen. We had a summit. The commissioners are fighting with the state and the Tax Commissioner, and we convened a summit with the lawmakers, Senator Lang and our representatives, Hall and Carruthers, Creach, and Gross, because it's clearly in the hands of our lawmakers. The Tax Commissioner is just abiding by the law. So I'm not certain what can be done at this point, especially in this late hour. They are coming out strong, and there are other parts of the state that are also contesting these outrageous increases. It's just supply shortages, all the trillions that were pumped into the economy has made real estate and rents, as you can imagine, just skyrocket. So it's going to be very, very difficult for people, especially on a fixed income, the elderly. Being treasurer for 16 years, I know the hardships that property taxes can take on a person, and we also have a situation in Butler County where eight of our 10 school districts, which does include Talawanda, is at the 20 mil floor, and I'm not going to get into a bunch of tax calculation, but usually as values go up, rates go down so that you're still collecting the most, or collecting the same amount each year. But once you have a school district at the 20 mil floor, those rates will no longer go down. So with these increases in values, eight of our 10 school districts are going to have increases in taxes. Maybe not proportionately, but they would be a lot higher than they have been in the past. So it's because of these value increases that has caused all of these school districts to reach that 20 mil floor. So we're looking at serious hardships on, on people for their property tax bills in 2024. The first bill would be in February, and then, of course, the next one in August. But we're going to keep battling. I don't, since we lost the case in court, the former auditor, the Tax Commissioner is using that case to hang her hat on and say, you lost, we used the last year, because there's also a fight whether you use three years of values or the last year. And if we use three years, our office is saying 24% increase. Anyway, I'm not going to throw out a whole bunch of numbers, but we're going back and forth. The lawmakers are doing what they can. I, I think our hands may be tied, but we'll see who's got power and influence in Columbus. Time will tell. At this point, I really don't know what's, what's going to happen. But I wanted to come and update you. In the Auditor's Office, I know we work with Mr. Elliott, and Mike Stein works with, he's our real estate director, and helps a lot of the townships and school districts and city councils with their levies and other information they need. But we also do all the chief, you know, expenses and expense approval and financial statements for the county, weights and measures, dog tags, licensing. Our office does a whole lot for 30 people. They work very hard. I was blessed to inherit a wonderful staff. I couldn't be more proud of them and more thankful that my predecessor at least knew how to hire good people. But anyway, I'm here to just answer any questions you have and just introduce myself, and I wanted to meet you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate you coming. Does anybody have a question for Nancy?
Could I just pay you a compliment on another taxation part of it is not always viewed as a service, although ultimately it really is, but as somebody teaches urban planning, the Butler County GIS system is so integral to planning in communities.
Yeah.
I know our community development department uses it every day, five times a day, probably. It's bookmarked on my computer. So, yeah, the ability is just a really powerful tool that I think is, people don't know how powerful it is, and it's public, and so thanks for maintaining that.
Well, on that front, I will tell you, the former auditor differed from me a little bit in that his sole intent was keeping costs down, having no expenses, so he would send all the money back to the schools. But doing that, we haven't invested in technology like I would like us to, because there's, our office is such a repository for information, and when we're not investing in technology, we're not getting that information out there. So we are making more investments in technology, GIS, and I think you're going to see a lot of improvements on our website for your neighborhoods and giving you additional data you've never had before. It's really phenomenal.
Then we'll use it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes. Hi, Glenn, I didn't meet you.
I'm Glenn. Former auditor used to send an individual here and talk about different fraud prevention programs that you guys are doing.
Mm-hmm.
Specifically, the car skimmers and other things like that would be on gas stations. Did you plan on continuing that?
Um, for sure. That's David Brown. He's still there, and I know that was a big issue in 2019. I think they have got mechanisms in place to prevent that, so it's not even come up since I've entered office in February, but yes, definitely. If, if something raises its head, we will definitely be checking into that. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that was easy. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll turn to public comments. Anyone who wishes to address council on items that are not on tonight's agenda or that appear on our consent agenda, this is your moment to come forward and talk to us. If you would give us your name and where you live, street is fine. That would be great, and we'll give you five minutes. If you have comments on something that's on the agenda, just wait until that comes up, and we'll give you that opportunity then. Not seeing a big rush to the podium, I will assume that there are no one who wants to speak now, and we'll move to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Consent agenda is approved, and we will move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for $1.5 million for a new Talawanda, Oxford pantry and social services facility from the Butler County American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Jessica, we got to you real fast.
You did. Good evening. Thank you. Let me get this ready for you real quick. Okay. A few months ago, we had sent, we had voted on a resolution to send a request as a top priority for TOPPS to the Butler County Commissioners for 1.5 million, and they had some discussion around that and then wrote back, and they wanted a bit more information and asked to see a proposed operating budget from the TOPPS and FRC groups. And so we did ask them for that information, and they provided it. Doug and I met with their board leadership to review their proposed operating budget, and then I was able to email that to you for review, and because it's not in the packet, it is here tonight on the screen, and it will be included in the minutes. So I think Doug and I feel comfortable in presenting this to you this evening, and if approved tonight, we will forward this information to the county for their review with our application and then await their vote. But this is the information they asked to see. And with us this evening, I do have representatives from both TOPPS and FRC in case you have more detailed questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Welcome in.
Anne Fur. I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. I'm here as the former Director of TOPPS from July 2019 through December 2021. Along with Brad Havelitzel and Jessica Green, I presented the proposal to receive the money from the county on August 25th, 2021. I was dismayed by the city's pivoting in October of 2022 and resisted the competition among social service agencies that was manufactured by some people. There are multiple subcultures that exist in Oxford calling for different community centers that provide different resources and serve individuals from different demographic groups. There is, of course, overlap in demographic groups served, for example, seniors who are living in poverty. When the county commissioners expressed a desire to use ARPA funds to equally support community centers in Middletown, Hamilton, and Oxford to the tune of $1.5 million each, I don't think they gave a coherent expression of, that they understood the demographics of our city and school district. I've made comments to council over the last 18 months in my current role as facilitator for another 501(c)(3) Oxford Citizens for Peace and Justice. I've decried the problematic focus in Oxford Tomorrow, in plans for addressing the shortage of affordable housing, and in the city's budget. For me, these convey a lack of explicit government role in fulfilling human rights of food, shelter, and medical care for all residents of our city. Agencies like TOPPS, the Family Resource Center, the Free Clinic, and Oxford Seniors operate alternative supply chains so that, in the case of TOPPS, about 600 unique families each year are able to access affordable nutritious food, housing, and health care, with a significant percentage of renters being housing burdened. Affordable food, utilities, and medical care means at no cost or at very low cost. Without TOPPS, FRC, the Free Clinic, and Oxford Seniors, members of those, 600 families would be making untenable choices. Those agencies have been implicitly, but not explicitly, delegated the task of fulfilling basic human rights. The city must address the Miami-focused market conditions and exclusive privileging of profit in the local housing market. The ARPA funds for a one-stop building allow for merger and more efficient operation of TOPPS, FRC, and partners who would operate satellite offices there, in addition to more seamless experiences for their already stressed customers and clients. Charitable handouts are welcome, but do not hold our citizen council manager group accountable for sustainably supporting agencies like TOPPS and FRC that do confront exploitative market conditions. So your positive vote on this resolution will begin to respond to the county commissioner's request, and it would also be helpful if you could first request an agenda item for the next commissioner's meeting to present the five-year budget they requested. Second, request a timely vote on the matter so that, should they support funding it, TOPPS and FRC can get to work. And finally, show support and solidarity with TOPPS and FRC by presenting the budget together with representatives from those agencies, just like we did in August of 2021. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anne. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this resolution?
Hi, I'm Kathy Brinkman. I live on Emerald Woods Drive in Oxford. I've stood here speaking in support of the TOPPS project, one-stop project, several times, most recently two weeks ago. Probably tired of me showing up, supporting it, but I will persist. I've stood in front of the Butler County Commissioners as well and supported it, and I'm prepared to do so again. TOPPS and FRC offer invaluable services to our community. As Anne said, they assist over 600 families who are food and housing insecure. The one-stop project will greatly enhance our ability to provide services, as well as providing many other amenities that have been discussed numerous times by this council. So I urge you to approve the resolution tonight and move this project out of a kind of limbo that hits in right now. But I think that there's more that can be done, and I endorse what Anne has said. I think that making a strong show of support to the commissioners is important. In their meetings, two of their meetings where they discussed at length the problems with this project, it was their uncertainty as to where the priorities lie with Oxford, even after the priorities were sent to the commissioners. So I think that they need the strength of approval, as well as a balanced approach to presenting the budget to them in order for them to truly understand that it is a priority and that the city stands behind the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Kathy. Would anyone else like to address council on this resolution? Okay, we'll move to council and discussion. Questions or comments?
Yeah, can we address Anne and Kathy's? Sorry, I'm really bad at speaking into this. Can we address their request to request an agenda item, a quick vote, and will we be presenting together with the representatives?
When I forward this to the county administrator, Judy Boyko, I can ask, you know, when, when does she anticipate this to be on the agenda? And she's usually been pretty good at letting us know, and we can also ask for it to be soon or than later. I do believe past discussions have been initiated by county commissioners instead of like an actual agenda item. Does that, but I will ask for...
That's why I would hope that we could request it, because I've also tried to figure out when, and it seems like they didn't have a very good system for bringing things up, even when they were...
I can ask. I will see if I can get the answer for you.
And if we...
Thank you. I think most of council would agree with that.
And when we do present, will we be able to present with our representatives from TOPPS and FRC?
I can ask. I don't, I don't...
Well, I assume if we get the agenda spot, that would be up to us whether we would present with them or not.
Well, yeah, I'm invited to present, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Jessica, while you're there.
Yes.
Easy question. This, I'm trying to clarify what we're doing right now for me.
Okay.
So we already voted on TOPPS being the proposal that we had. They sent us a request for more information, specifically financial, what does it say, financial stuff. We have now presented that here, but they also put in a provision that says you need to run it by us to ratify that again.
Yes.
So this is just a formality, right?
Yes, and that is my, that is my interpretation.
Cool. Thank you.
Well, so, but I guess the point is, I know that you have met with the groups about this budget, but this is not our budget. This is their budget they're presenting.
Correct.
So I mean, and, and we're not making any, you know, commitment to...
There is a commitment from the city.
I mean, there's the commitment to the $57,000.
Yes, the, the city does commit to an annual contribution of $57,000. That was one of the discussion items that Doug and I had with them, so that is a part of our contribution.
I guess my point is, though, is that in terms of this budget, we're not, the other numbers other than that are outside of our control.
Is their, is their operations.
So, yeah, so we're not in any way, I mean, endorsing or like...
Wait, can I, can I jump in here? They requested five times in their meeting that we show support in various ways, and even though this budget represents them, they want to hear our support, and so presenting together, committing to that $57,000 that we've helped put into that budget would be huge, and I think is really important, and we can't just hand this off to the representatives from those organizations themselves.
Personally, I don't think they should have sent it back to us to vote on it again, but I think if we have a strong support tonight, then that will send a message, and then it will move forward, and Jessica will ask for them to act on it quickly so we can start the process of construction.
While we can. Yeah, so my, like, my, my basic point is, is I, I didn't 100% understand this step, but if, if they wanted it, and, and I'm not sure why we need another resolution, but we'll express our support again. I guess I'm just saying that we're just conveying this budget. You know, this is not anything we're approving or oblig, obligated to, other than through the, that dollar line that's ours.
Yes, I do think you are committing to the $57,000 per year, and then other than that, you're just saying that you have seen this. And that you then still want this to be your top priority.
And we support that, yeah. So, yeah.
Another related question. The clock is still 26, correct?
Yes, this project needs to be completed by the year 2020, end of 2026.
So...
And the funds need to be completely encumbered by the end of 2024.
So this was just an extra step that's delaying that, right? All right, cool. Thank you.
Glenn, I think you have nailed it. That is exactly right. Are you ready to vote? Oh, go ahead.
Just for clarification on the numbers, how much were, did they used to get from the city per year?
This is, this is about what they have received for many years. It's a combined amount of, because they are showing a combined budget, this is a combined donation that we typically give to both TOPPS and Family Resource Center together.
I mean, it's really quite a steal for $57,000. I mean, that's one vehicle that we'll purchase, so if that, so, I mean, I feel like the support is already there, so, yeah.
Let's consider this a minimum.
Yeah.
So, and what this budget doesn't have is, is there going to be, need to be a capital campaign in addition to the 1.5? This is, this is an operating budget, not really capital budget, right? And so...
This is an operating budget. They did submit in their, and I did not bring this forward tonight, but they are here, but if you have detailed questions, but I did present their updated construction estimate, and it was within the range of the 1.5 million.
Are we ready? Okay. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimously adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move then to item B.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Jackson Construction Company Incorporated for the installation of new curb, gutter, and sidewalk in conjunction with the 2023 special assessment program at a cost of $195,134.50 with a contingency amount of $4,856.50 for a total cost not to exceed $200,000.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. This is the second piece of legislation required for the special assessment program. Council's already approved the resolution of necessity authorizing the program, so this is the construction contract to do the work for the property owners that have chosen for the city to perform the service. We opened bids. We had three bids from well-known contractors that we've used in the past. The low bid was from Jackson Construction, who we've used for several years. They're a low overhead company, and it's reflected in their pricing, but we have a savings of $78,000 compared to the second lowest bid. So these are advantageous and affordable costs for the property owners that are going to ultimately pay for this work. So we recommend approval of the contract. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Michael. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution before council? Okay, seeing none, councilors? Do you have any questions or comments? Have you seen this before? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, and we'll move to the third resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a $250,000 grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Public Safety to engage in and coordinate as lead agency for the countywide OVI task force.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Moved by Counselor Franklin. Chief, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is our annual application for the Butler County OVI grant. We serve as the lead agency for the Butler County OVI Task Force, where 13 agencies come together and share money that comes from the state to do extra OVI patrols and OVI checkpoints. So we're applying for that. The grant is $25,000 more than it has been for the last several years, so it's a $250,000 grant, and so we're applying on behalf of the OVI Task Force.
Okay. Thank you very much. Chief, is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay, this is essentially just what we've done, what we did last year, and same thing with the next resolution.
It is, and I'll come back to you in October, once we're awarded the grant with permission to accept the grant. So I bring this up twice a year to you.
Yep. Okay. Are there questions for the chief?
Just for clarification, is it the, oh my gosh, what are they called? The plans, like, stops? Is that exactly what this grant goes towards? Is it for a task force at all times?
So it's, what, the way it works is money is distributed to the various agencies involved once they, it's submitted on a reimbursement amount. So there are certain patrol shifts that each agency will post that an officer is sent out on overtime to look strictly for impaired driving. So they go out and patrol, and then their salary is reimbursed through that grant. As part of the grant, you also are required to conduct, like, I think it's 16 checkpoints in the county, in certain areas where statistics have shown that we need to be conducting those checkpoints. The checkpoints are mostly for educational purposes. You know, we don't always get a lot of arrests out of them, but it helps educate the public and deter the public from drinking and driving. And then there will be other things with this grant that may come out of it, like expenses involving the trailer that we take to those checkpoints, and then the coordinator's salary, which is the next resolution on there.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted. We'll move to number four.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Peter M. Rising to perform consulting services and to function as the Butler County OVI Task Force Coordinator for the 2024 grant funded through the Ohio Department of Public Safety.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And it's seconded. Thank you very much. Chief Duvardi.
We explained, yes, I've explained the grant, but this would be for us to contract, should we be provided the grant, which generally we are, that this would allow us to contract with Pete Rising, who is a former sergeant with the Oxford Police Department. He has coordinated the DUI Task Force for all the agencies since 2015, and then he retired, and he continues to do that. So that saves us from paying, you know, a sergeant to do it and allows him to coordinate this and attend the checkpoints and file the paperwork. So his contract, it does call for an increase. We, every few years, we look at it and try to compare it to what that rate would normally be, and so it is jumping from 60 to 70 per hour, but it's not, it's not really bringing any more out of the grant because of the hours he works. It's probably just reducing his hours, because he never really gets that maximum hours. So the most that would, that would be out of the grant would be $30,000, but generally it's about $21,000.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted. We'll move to ordinances. There are no first readings this evening, and so we will move to our one second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3697, supplemental budget ordinance number three, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2023.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Welcome, Heidi.
Good evening. We, there's been no changes from the first reading, so if you want to approve the twinkle lights, feel free to do so.
That's mainly what we want to know on second reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay. Counselors, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Regu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Nably?
Yes. Okay, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much. Good luck, Heidi. You're doing a good job.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move to announcements and communications. I'll begin with Doug Elliott.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things regards to our collective bargaining with our police division unions. In my report to counsel, I shared with counsel that we had mediation in April. No agreement was reached, and we therefore go to fact-finding. We agreed on a fact-finder, but basically, the earliest date that we could meet was in August, so we've gone back, and I think we're going to agree to a different fact-finder that has a more open schedule for us, because we're all wanting to get this resolved, and hopefully we can get the agreements resolved with fact-finding. So I did want to share that with you. The other thing that I wanted to share, I noted in the environmental commission meeting, there was some discussion about our electric aggregation supplier. As we all know, it expires within December billing, and I just wanted to share with the counsel that basically our requirement is that it's renewable energy and that there will not be a termination or monthly fee, and that it'd be a fixed rate, and we usually focus on three years. I believe there was some discussion about maybe we could find an Ohio supplier. As we all know, Ohio doesn't rank very high with renewable energy. In fact, of the 50 states in production of renewable energy, we rank about 35th out of those 50 states. And of course, as a result of HB6, the racketeering charge that came as a result of that, the energy requirement is now lowered to 7% in 2023, so there's not a lot of incentive for local suppliers to get involved in renewable energy. Nonetheless, you know, we hope to get some good proposals, and once again, our requirement is going to be that it be 100% renewable energy, fixed rate, without a termination or monthly fee, so I did want to share that with you. Also, I looked at the proposals we got three years ago, and we received three proposals from three companies, and of course, we went with Energy Harbor and, of course, our broker, who will be asking for proposals, Affordable Gas Electric, will be, you know, receiving those probably in August, and then we'll be reporting back to counsel and hopefully with a recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mike?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, chief?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Heidi?
I just wanted to give, kind of, give you a heads up about, in July 3rd is when we're transitioning our smart bill to the online payment portal as well. So we have some big, we've got some big things coming up. We are shorthanded. I do want to give a shout out to our utility division. They did a phenomenal job with the move outs. Typically, we transition three to 400 accounts at this time of year, and they, they've really stepped up and been the backbone for that, because they haven't, we haven't been able to really help much with, with short staffs. So I just wanted to give them a shout, and hopefully we can continue moving forward and seamlessly. It has been, been going fairly well.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. Chief DeThridge?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, thank you. Jessica?
Just a few small updates. So sometimes we get to work on small things that are meaningful things, in my opinion. And so June is Pride Month, and this year, we have done a commission of Pride Dora Cups. And so you'll see those coming around to businesses in the month of June. And we also have a similar style of this, a Pride banner going across High Street. So we're pretty excited about those two things. And then also, in 2023 council retreat, one of the goals, one of the large categories that a lot of counselors supported was creative place-making to encourage economic activity. And it just so happens that Oxford is in the path of the total solar eclipse on April 8th of 2024. And so you were all cordially invited to a total eclipse of the parks. And this is a flyer that Enjoy Oxford took up to the State House for State Tourism Day, and they passed it out to all the people who came, and it says, "Come early, stay late. Oxford is in the path of the total solar eclipse, April 8th at 3:08 PM. Enjoy a weekend full of eclipse-themed festivities in our beautiful college town." And then it says, "Learn more in City of Oxford.org/eclipse." So I have some of these for all of you. They've been already making their rounds, and we're pretty excited about that, among many other creative place-making activities that we are actively...
And it doesn't go to Columbus, so they should come down.
They should come to Oxford. And something more on the logistics side that we do have to deal with and think about and plan is that other small towns that were in the path of the eclipse, the pastime, were really overrun with tons and tons of tourists. And so there is a logistical side to having a lot of tourists, and so we're already working with the police and the service department about, what does that look like? How do we, how do we manage it? And it'll be, it'll be a fun, it'll be a fun event. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Glenn?
I'd just like to give a shout out to the city for making another move out relatively smooth. There were a couple of things here and there, but, you know, it was essentially a non-issue. And then the second thing I want to talk about is how excited I am toward this Saturday with the Craft Beer and Wine Festival. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I'm going to second both of those things and say a preemptive thank you to everybody who's worked really, really hard on the Oxford Craft Beer and Wine Festival, because it's going to be multiple weeks before we have a meeting again after that event, so I just want to make sure that we said our hearty thanks and congratulations ahead of time.
On that same note, with the Beer and Wine Festival, there will be the first environmental commission compost recycling trash table. It'll be very portable, hopefully attractive. If anyone can sew, I will take care of on that. So it will hopefully make it easy for people to have events that you already, you can hopefully work through the environmental commission to have a ready set table and volunteer system. And so on that note, the trash bins are coming from Sharefest, because someone had a bunch of bins that they picked up from the students moving away, which begs the question of, why does someone have to throw away a trash can every single year? So it's an interesting concept of, we have a problem that is manufactured with all the goods that are being thrown away, especially our mattresses that do not have a place with any, maybe some, but very few charities. So it's a, how can we be creative to try to figure out a way to have furnished apartments, especially when you have such a rapid turnover? So lots of things to come with that, and also in celebration of, hopefully we're on track for the request for proposal for curbside composting, right? In June, July? Is that when we're...
Is it due in June?
It, it's due in June? Oh, so it's happening right now?
It will be published in June.
Yeah, that's exciting. So the composting table will be in educational support of this to come.
I just wanted to congratulate all of the graduates and their families, and to thank both Miami and OPD for the hard work they do in managing traffic. It's talking about the town being overrun. I went to three graduation ceremonies, one for my department, Speech Pathology and Audiology, the College of Arts and Science one, which was Friday night, sorry, Saturday evening or afternoon, but I went to one on Friday, which was the Horizon graduation, which is for underrepresented students, and it was a joyful experience. It was my second time going. There's also the lavender graduation for LGBTQ plus students, which I've not been able to go to yet. Wonderful experiences, because it's not always easy for students from underrepresented groups to spend four years here at Miami. They've had sometimes some very difficult experiences, and I just want to remind people that the Senate bill and the companion House bill would make those types of ceremonies prohibited, that there couldn't be ceremonies for underrepresented students under that bill, which is a problem. And Chief Jones, I'm wondering if at some point, on a different note, I know that Ohio has a new law regarding distracted driving as a primary offense, and if closer to the beginning of the fall semester, I know there's a grace period where officers are giving out warnings and not tickets, but maybe a little bit of education for the community or a presentation at city council later on? Thank you.
Jason?
I fully endorse total eclipse of the parks. I think that is fantastic. Also, for those who haven't seen, a total eclipse in the totality along the line, it is vastly different than a partial eclipse, and vastly different than being outside of that narrow line that we happen to be in. It is a life-changing experience. There are so many people who see it once and then travel the world, because it's that visceral of an experience. It is amazing. And also, I've worked with park systems before to explain the astronomy around the different types of eclipses, the moon phases, everything else, so if you can use me, I'll go forward to that.
Stay tuned.
Nice. All right. A few little, little things, one, I do want to thank the OPD. I happened to wake up on Saturday night at like 2:45 in the morning, and the roar from Uptown was pretty crazy, you know? And so I was just grateful to be asleep, and somebody else was trying to manage the public safety in that time. It seems like we got through that, but, you know, it was a little bit of a wild weekend. Shout out to Sharefest and all the people who collaborated in it was really, you know, I feel like, it seems like Uptown and the Mile Square is relatively orderly, and I see less abject waste than we saw in recent years. A little bit just of an update, the managed natural lawn ordinance, I mean, I think we had debates like, well, why does this need to be a code change? I think it changed the code, and it also signaled something, and there's a lot of conversation in the community, and it seems like people are really in support of it. Shade makers is ordering natives to help support the effort, so I'm glad that we took the step of, I know you're doing more education, which is great, but I think that the code itself was an important thing. And then this is just a little expression of gratitude, you know, all of us are paying more attention to Columbus than we want to, watching the machinations with the August bill and the, you know, and I'm just so grateful to be in a city council. We all have our ideologies and beliefs, but we're working in a straightforward way to improve democracy and not, you know, I look at the State House, and I just don't know. So, but anyway, I won't, I'm grateful for the transparency and the accountability of local government, so.
We do our best. Yes. I also want to congratulate the Miami graduates and make note that most people in Oxford, if you talk to them, as I have over the years, and you say, what are the two best days of the year? Almost unanimously, it's move-out weekend, because we get our town back, and it's move-in weekend, because we get our students back. And so those are the two really big momentous times, and I think I agree with Glenn, it was fairly smooth. We could do a better job with Sharefest. I think that they work very hard, and we accomplished a lot, but we could accomplish a lot more. I want to also encourage people to the Wine and Craft Beer Festival on Saturday, it starts at 2:00 PM in the parks, and I know that there are people coming from Cincinnati and other areas, because it's prone to that level of knowledge, and so we'll have visitors in our community. Let's be helpful to them and show them around, and hopefully they'll come back again. And I, too, am fired up about the eclipse of the park. I went to St. Louis for the total eclipse a few years back, and it was magical. When, all of a sudden, it's completely dark, and you see all the stars, and then you see all, you hear the birds and the crickets, and everything just start up. It's magical. The whole thing is worth praying for good weather. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much.